Good evening, everyone. We're going to reconvene the board meeting of the Rialto Unified School District at 7:00 PM. Tonight, we're in Eisenhower High School. And we have, we will have a special military performance by Eisenhower High School cadets. But first, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance by Angelica Pileo. Angelica, please come forward.
Please recite the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag after me. I pledge an allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
And now led by US Marine Captain Wayne Lester, the Eisenhower High School Junior ROTC Silent Drill Team will display a short presentation. On behalf of the board, thank you Captain Lester for that wonderful drill team. Thank you so much to Eisenhower Junior Marine Corps Cadets. To our principal, Mr. Sanchez, and all the administrators here at Eisenhower High School, thank you for your hospitality this evening. And now, we will proceed on with the board meeting. Thank you very much. First, we will start with a report out of closed session by Dr. Seabrook.
No action was taken.
Okay. Next, we will have the adoption of the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that we will approve the agenda as, as written. Vote by board members, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Next, we will have our presentations, starting with our DSAC presentations by our student board member, Ms. Fernandez.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. From Eisenhower High School, please welcome Gina Gomez.
Good evening Superintendent Seabrook, Board of Education and viewing audience. My name is Gina Gomez, and I am more than happy to welcome you all to my home of the Eagles, Eisenhower High School. First and fourth most, Eisenhower is hosting a variety of events to finish up the year. For the class of 2012, we kicked off our week with the prom fashion show just yesterday. Our prom will be located at the Queen Mary on April 21st, and our grad night at Six Flags Magic Mountain on May 31st. To avoid the long lines on campus, the tickets are available online and at our campus. Luckily for my peers and I, the Career Center is now open until 6:00 PM every day until the end of the year for students that need internet access and tutoring on any subject. And last but definitely not least, Herb Jones will be coming this Friday to distribute cap and gowns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gomez. Now, from Rialto High School, please welcome Ricardo Santos.
Good evening, Honorable Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Seabrook, and viewing audience. My name is Ricardo Santos, and I am ASB President at Rialto High School. This week has been a busy week for our school. On Monday, we did a pep rally for our freshmen, sophomores, and juniors to encourage them to score an 800 as a school for the CSTs. For the seniors, we went to the movies on Tuesday, and today, we went to Fiesta Village where we had an amazing time with all our friends. Tomorrow, we will be having our prom fashion show, and we will be distributing caps and gowns. Next week, on Friday, we will be having our most anticipated event, the prom pep rally, where we will announce the top three prom kings and queens. One of the most successful events, we, events was the prom we did for the seniors at the Retirement Center. We played musical, music from their generation and served them snacks. We all had, we all had a chance to dance with them, we had a great time, and we are going to continue to do this for them next year. Thank you and have a great evening.
Thank you.
And I believe that's on Ms. Gilbert.
Thank you. Next, we will have a presentation for Employee of the Quarter by Vice President Ayala.
Good evening, community and staff. He's right here with me, this is Mr. James Nava. But before I read, I'd like to share that I can attest as a former teacher how important it is to have the correct supervision, the correct people in charge. I worked 34 years as a high school teacher, retired, and I can tell you, most of my stress did not come from the kids, like some people believe. If you have a boss, you know what it's like. And, you know, when changes come, and they come all the time, the big change for us was no child left behind. Everything changed. And we had staff that were, I guess you could say, a little uneasy with it. And the last thing you want to do is empower somebody that's not comfortable with themselves, because then that creates a lot of sparks. I can tell you, from what I've heard from people that know this man to my left here, Mr. Nava, that they don't feel like that. They have a person that has empathy, that knows how to deal with situations, and make people feel good about themselves. And, starting with that, I'll read what was written here about Mr. Nava, because I'll tell you right now, that's extremely important to have the right people in the right positions. Tonight, we honor Mr. James Nava, Principal of Casey Elementary School, as the Rialto Schools Employee Association's Employee of the Quarter. James was born in Omaha, Nebraska. A 1989 graduate from Ramona High School, he earned his bachelor's degree in Japanese history and teaching credential from Cal State San Bernardino. He then went on to earn his master's degree from Chapman University. In 1990, James began working at Rialto Unified School District's Coben Middle School as an instructional aide. Oh, that's awesome. I didn't know that. That's, that's super. Now that, you start understanding where you get the empathy. He began teaching in 2005, soon found himself in education management as an elementary administrator at Dunn Elementary. In 2007, he was promoted as the principal of Casey Elementary School. "Casey isn't absolutely the best period," said James. "We've got the best students, the parents, the teachers, we're just the best." According to RSMA, President Elizabeth Curtis, James was instrumental in helping the district with enthusiastically beginning the elementary sports program. He also spearheaded the taekwondo program. He currently has approximately 100 students from all levels participated in this program, and he does it without extra compensation or need of recognition. James has a heart for his students, staff, and community. Curtis, he always puts students first in his decision-making as a leader. James is a dedicated employee and well-respected by his peers. We are so honored that he is being recognized as Employee of the Quarter. James is here tonight with his family, wife Alma, are you here Alma? Do you like to stand? Come on forward. She herself is a second grade teacher at Dunn Elementary. His son, James, James, are you here? Come on, James. He's a sixth grade student, a J-Hugh middle, and his daughter Angela. Come on, Angela. Angela is in third grade at Casey Elementary. James also has a sister, Judy Nava, are you here Judy? Okay, she couldn't make it. Who is also a teacher at Rialto Unified School District's Cordillac Elementary School. "This is a very humbling experience," he said. "To be recognized by my peers, it means a lot, because they're equally deserving." And, you know, with that in mind, let's go ahead and present him the certificate for the honor bestowed to him tonight by Rialto Unified School District.
I know I had to write something because, you know, if you well, if you know me well, I, I do everything, you know, from the cuff, from emotion, and that's even being a principal. Sometimes it's those gut shots that you have to make that are right. There's only right and wrong, that's it. With that, that's not here. So, good evening, Honorable Board of Education, Cabinet members. Dr. Seabrook, I am humbled by the mere fact that I was nominated by my peers and my colleagues, and I appreciate that they voted for me as Employee of the Quarter. I believe that one cannot be successful unless you have successful and positive people surrounding you and supporting you. I would like to thank everyone who helps me do my job to the best of my abilities. And if I could be here all night thanking everybody, because I can't do this with myself, or by myself, I should say. My fellow principals and co-administrators, you know, you guys work your tails off and you guys give me advice, and you give me support, and every one of you guys should be up here. To the Casey community, and in fact, the Rialto community, the parents, the students, I know many of you, and, and I love you guys. Casey staff, as you can, they're here, who are the most dedicated and loving people that I've ever met. My secretaries, Loose Pink's Maria, they do everything and anything to make parents and students happy. That's their job. Mercedes Perez, who's my LDS, who's just an outstanding person, this lady just does, she just, she does everything in her power to make our kids successful and have that opportunity. To my coadministrator, my EA, Joanna Cuellar, who just makes, who just plain makes me look good. I mean, she does, she does everything. And I, you know, I want to thank my, my lovely wife Alma, who just, you know, she does, she's outstanding. My son, James, and my daughter Angela. They are, they're very proud of me, but I'm very proud of them. So many people, but I would also like to thank, thank you, Dr. Seabrook, for entrusting me, for entrusting me with Casey Elementary. I am honored to follow your leadership, and I appreciate everything that you have done for me and the community of Rialto. Guys, you know, I've been in Rialto since I was 19 years old. You know, and I, at first, I was like, oh, extra money, college and everything, but you grow to love this community. And I know many of you, and I know that each and every one of you, I know what you put into it and what it takes out of you. But the bottom line is, you know, we're just trying to do what's best for this community. And our payment is when those kids come back as adults, and they give you that hug, and they just say, "Thank you." So I want to thank you for all your support, for everything that you do, and Board of Education, thank you so much. Thank you so much for leading this community and our district. And I am humbled to follow your lead. Thank you so much.
We also have a, we also have a certificate of special congressional recognition from Congressman Joe Baca. Small token appreciation for all the hard work you do at Casey Elementary School. Congratulations on your selection for Employee of the Quarter by the Rialto School Management Association. Commend you in your hard work and contributions to public education. Best wishes in the months and years ahead, and as signed, our Congressman Joe Baca. Thank you.
Next, we will have student data presentation by Dan Sosa and Jan Harper.
Thank you so much, and I apologize for the technical difficulties. Good evening, Honorable Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Seabrook, members of the Cabinet and colleagues, parents and viewing audience. My name is Daniel Sosa, Senior Director of Research Education, excuse me, Research Evaluation and Assessment, and I'm here with my colleague, Jen Harper, who is the Senior Director of QEIA College Prep Programs, GATE. And we will go ahead and start our presentation. We'll be talking about the formative assessments that we use here in the district. Some of our objectives we'll be going over today, we'll be talking about the rationale for why we use the item bank here in the district. We'll do a short review of the Benchmark 3 results, and we'll talk about the professional development that was offered to the staff in conjunction with the results for our assessment. We utilize a data partner that's out of Lake Elson or Key Data Systems, and we utilize their item bank that's called Inspect. There are over 41,000 items in this item bank that are all written to assess state standards. As you can see, it's about 60/40 with elementary and secondary. When we reviewed the research as to why we chose this, one of the main reasons was because the company uses widely-held research base for the validity and reliability for their assessment items. There's a strong positive correlation between how the students do on this assessment and how they do on the CST, so it has good predictive value. Benchmark 3 was a comprehensive benchmark to mirror the CST, to really give schools a strong idea about how their students would do on the upcoming CST, and to also establish a baseline for future performance in years hence. For our elementary grades, you can see that the average percent of mastery for all elementary schools is displayed here, so our students are making good, positive growth here within our ELA and math as well.
At our middle schools, you can see that English is normal, is surpassing math, and that's because of the transition from direct number sense that we all understand, it's concrete, into the much more pre-algebra and algebra concepts which are abstract. And this mirrors types that we have had in the past. Remember, this is a comprehensive benchmark, which means if they had to take the test before spring break without any intervention from that time to testing, that's the predictability. However, we've had several weeks of different kinds of on, drilling down to the particular standard or substandard that they were showing difficulty with. And then, for high school, you can see, this is a CST type, a lot of high school emphasis is placed on Casey because of the AYP, Casey is the High School Exit Exam Test, but in the API side of the house, CSTs are just as important. Grade 11 is making great gains. A lot of focus has been on grade 11, I know, throughout our high schools, and it's, it's showing in our, in our benchmark there. What we did, and what Dr. De Souza's team did, was they sat down and they analyzed benchmarks 1, 2, and 3. They looked at the clusters, and they looked at where kids were scoring well and where kids were still having difficulty. They brainstormed, they got together, and they offered specialized workshops in all kinds of topics based upon what the data told us. Some of the areas in ELA was writing conventions, reading comprehensions, writing strategies, and improving writing, and they use the six traits to writing to do that. We have content specialists that are delivering the programs to the teachers, so it's like a train-the-trainer model, and then they're able to go back and work with the students. In math, we looked at trying to make mathematics real for kids, not just regurgitating algorithms. So we looked at kind of like number line activities, using things that they have access to and making them much more meaningful. And so with that, you work on number cents and fractions, and having that good base then, when they go into algebra, that will allow them to understand the algebraic concepts. We also looked at big ideas in math. We used Singapore math ideas, we looked at different kinds of strategies on, this is the big idea, how do you break it down into the actual concepts that we do day in and day out? And Dr. De Souza's team led that with our PD staff accompanying him.
So in summation, we want to follow up by saying that Benchmark 3 again was a comprehensive benchmark in order to CST. The Ed Services team intends to use the same testing partner next year, so we want to make sure that as we move forward, we have apples-to-apples comparisons for how our students do and what types of supports we can give to our teachers and our staffs. For the CST, we have the strong positive correlation. For the elementary levels, it's about an 80% correlation, so if a student scores proficient on the benchmark, they have an 80% probability or higher of scoring the same or better for CST. That's a very strong correlation, and it gives our staffs a lot of tools to work with as we move forward. Schools use this information to inform and improve instruction. They go over these results with their leadership teams and in their PLCs to develop objectives and common lesson plans, to provide feedback for colleagues, and to inform future staff development needs, because it has a strong predictive value to the CST. We also discussed our professional development is offered on a consistent basis with very positive feedback from those who attended this, and we intend to capitalize on those trainings as we move forward in future years. And those, that's just a brief summary of how we use formative assessment data to improve student performance here in Rialto Unified. Do we have any questions? The teachers and the staffs are making huge gains as we look forward to increasing the amount of student proficiency advanced in algebra. That is said to be the gatekeeper to critical thinking as students move forward, so we definitely are putting emphasis there. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you again, Mr. Sosa and Ms. Harper. Now, we will go to the superintendent's report.
I'm pleased to have two of our staff members to participate in my report, beginning with Robin McGowan. with Robin McIver.
Thank you, Dr. Seabron. We'll be brief, but we are so excited to be here. I wear two hats. My name is Robin McIver Brown. I'm the Senior Director of Categorical Programs and Services, and I'm also involved in a community service organization called The Links Incorporated. And the Board of Education was so kind to allow our organization to partner with them on a most important project. I'm going to turn it over to my sister, Rhea McIver Brown, who's also, not Brown, just Rhea McIver. Who's a principal in the district at Warner Elementary School, to give a brief segue into the presentations that we are going to do tonight.
Good evening, Board members, Dr. Seabron, Cabinet members. I am President of the San Bernardino Valley Chapter of The Links Incorporated. We are a women's service organization founded in nineteen forty-six and our local chapter established in nineteen seventy-nine. Several members of our district are a part of our organization. Our Board President, Link Joanne Gilbert. Robin McIver Brown, Second Vice President, Marion Thompson, Recording Secretary. We are honored to have our chapter organizer and charter member, Betty Dean Anderson, and also charter member Darlene Brown. And they were both educators in San Bernardino City Unified School District. The Links has a project where we sew diapers and, out of t-shirts, and we deliver them to villages in Ghana and Kenya. Well, the sewing team's diaper stack was getting low, so Link Joanne Gilbert partnered with the Rialto School District and called on her sister Links to enlist the help of the high schools and middle schools to gather t-shirts so we could continue our project. And so we are very happy to say that the ladies will be sewing t-shirts into diapers for years, thanks to the efforts of the Rialto Unified School District. And Robin, who is President over Programs for our organization, will present the certificates.
We're so happy. We had one small meeting, and out of that came twenty-seven thousand diapers, t-shirts, from the Rialto Unified School District. So I want to not only commend the schools, but the teachers who got behind this project to help with an international cause. The infants in those third-world countries have a high death rate, and those diapers help to protect the children from diseases. And I'd like to call forward a representative from Cold Middle School at this time. They participated and collected eight-hundred-and-ninety t-shirts. Rialto Middle School participated, and they collected two-thousand-three-hundred-and-seven t-shirts. William J. Hugh Middle School participated and collected four-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighteen t-shirts. And now on to our high schools. Our high school, Eisenhower High School, participated and collected four-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-six t-shirts. Myler High School even participated, and they collected one-hundred-plus t-shirts. Thank you. Rialto High School collected one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety t-shirts. And our wonderful partner, all of our schools did an outstanding job. We were expecting to go around and collect all of these shirts in my car. I didn't think we would have such an overwhelming response, but Wilmer Amina Carter High School really took the cake, and they had a teacher and several teachers that stepped up to the plate and even took this initiative on their own to their own communities. And with that, they collected a total of sixteen-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-four t-shirts. The competitive spirit is alive and well in Rialto Unified, and that spirit of competition actually is going to help hundreds and hundreds of infants in Ghana and Kenya. And we thank the Rialto Unified, we thank the Board of Education, and most importantly, we thank our Superintendent, Dr. Seabron. And also, Maintenance and Operation, they really helped because they had to store some space for us until we got the t-shirts out of the schools. So we appreciate Carl Carlson and the entire MNO Department, and a special recognition to Shutress, who worked with me in organizing all of the collection. Thank you so much.
Jen Harper.
I too wear a different hat when I'm not at work, some of the things that I are passionate about. And tonight, I stand before you as a member of the California Association for the Gifted. I'm on the Board for the state, and with me is Marie Thornsberry, a teacher in our district, and she's on the Executive Board. And we have the honor to present an award to one of Rialto teachers, and this is the first time that we've had a Rialto teacher win this award. And the award is Joshua Tree Region, and that covers all of San Bernardino County, Riverside County, Enyo, and Mono Counties. I'd like to call up right now Deborah Gonzalez from Simpson. Deborah hates to be in the front, but she deserves it. Deborah was selected for this honor as she demonstrated going above and beyond in contributing to the interests of gifted and talented children. The four areas of the award are based on the following. She's demonstrated excellence that benefits gifted and talented students as well as all students. She's proven commitment to the gifted children. She's an advocate for them, and her service to California Association for the Gifted and other organizations is outstanding. Deborah is able to understand and guide students who have challenges. She has demonstrated the gift in dealing with GATE students who are twice exceptional. That means they're really, really good in one area, and they have some major learning disabilities in some other areas. She develops support structures for these students and takes personal pride in their success. She learns about her students and makes sure that she incorporates their interests, abilities, and needs into her instruction. She takes advantage of additional training whenever possible and is very adept in using the GATE strategies. Deborah has helped organize site collaboration days for the gifted program at Simpson Elementary. Her ideas and strategies were exchanged in school and in after-school activities for students, and they were planned out for the entire school year. She also has assisted at the district level when we've had our conferences in developing a program for students who accompany their parents to the district GATE conference so that their parents can take full advantage while their children are in interactive workshops. Deborah has a true heart for GATE students in the Rialto Unified School District, and she continues to support them in very creative ways regardless of negative fiscal factors. She has due attitude, and her students excel under her teaching. Teachers and parents look to her for support, and she is willing to share and support her entire community. I am so pleased that Deborah was nominated and selected while I'm on the Board, because this is like bringing it home to our school, and Deborah, you know.
Thank you.
I cannot thank you enough for all the work.
Jen knows, and it's hard. It's just my passion. And I just appreciate, I didn't know in the beginning, my principal nominated me. And I really appreciate the fact that she notices what we do, and Dee Marshall, even in the worst of times, is always positive and supportive. And she tries not to say no, and in that respect, I can't say no. And to me, the only thing I do is do what's right for kids. That's all I can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is public hearing, comments from the floor. Anyone at this time who wishes to make a comment will have three minutes to do so. Please note, the timer will be at the podium, and we will start with Dr. Wallace.
Okay, the first person will be Mr. Finn.
Anyone observing your board meetings can see you lack cohesiveness. However, the most serious problem is your demonstrated incompetence and lack of due diligence in knowing about the laws which govern you. It is understandable that the members of the public may not be familiar with the Brown Act, which makes it difficult for people to recognize the ongoing Brown Act violations being committed here. You, however, are held at a much higher standard since you have accepted the role as a public fiduciary. With the exception of Mr. Montez, it is embarrassing that you elected public servants have not taken the time to become intimately familiar with the law which governs you, and instead cower behind your inconsistent board policy and procedures, like treating the Roberts Rules of Order as more of authority than the Brown Act when conducting meetings. The Brown Act was designed so that the actions of the public board, such as yourself, be taken openly and that your deliberations be conducted openly. The problem among many is that the board lacks openness and transparency, which raises many questions and suspicions as to why. The people insist on remaining informed, as they very well should be. Mr. Montez is repeatedly put down and ridiculed for encouraging open deliberation. However, what you fail to appreciate is that he's the only board member attempting to be in compliance with the law. The remaining boards' members allow themselves to act as nothing more than a rubber stamp to the superintendent's agenda. People are hired, released, and charged without deliberation. Items are added to the agenda at the last minute and voted upon in violation of the Brown Act, and board members' votes seem to be orchestrated illegally by the use of polls before an item is voted upon in the public. You have compromised the community's trust in you, and we are greatly disturbed. There are too many distractions taking away from the students' achievements. We are a learning institution and not a sports institution. Have you forgotten that education is the priority? No matter how you present it, the data speaks for itself and shows that the Rialto students are performing lower on benchmarks than they were three years ago. The Casey passing rate is low, and the students' meeting graduation records this year is low. Why are CIF championships more celebrated than how many students are graduating and going to college? Not only are students being affected, but so are employees. At the last board meeting, this district let go of many employees. Employees' morale is low, and no one can candidly discuss it for fear of losing his or her job. People not working closely with Dr. Seabron on a daily basis do not experience the oppressive atmosphere he creates. You are stripping away the public's trust, and you have paranoid employees hunkering down, trying not to do anything to track attention. With all this said, know that the members of the public will no longer sit in silence or ignorance of the law and have begun a vigorous scrutinizing of your actions. You will be held accountable. Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe, is it Canary Finn, or is this a double? Okay, next person will be Terry Boykin.
Boy, it's kind of hard to follow. It's kind of quiet when I was walking up here, but I'm not going to be that radical. I want to take an opportunity to say good evening to the Board, to the Cabinet, to the parents and the educators. My name is Terry Boykin, CEO of Street Positive, also the organizer of the Million Father March. A few years ago, I had a chance to talk to Dr. Seabron about what fathers were doing around this country to become more engaged in the lives of their children, which currently there are more than twenty-four million fathers that do not reside in a twelve-month period within the home of a child, which is absolutely incredible. And when I talked to Dr. Seabron about this a few years ago, just to give him an update, we had roughly two hundred cities that participated in the Million Father March when he and I first met. As of last year, we have had over sixteen hundred cities, over four million fathers around this country that are ready to step up and be a part of the education system and a part of their children's lives from the start of school until they graduate. And that right there is something that Dr. Seabron's name has been shared with individuals around this country. I have just recently been flown to Louisville, Kentucky by George Soros, who's the billionaire investor, and I shared Dr. Seabron's openness to have fathers become more engaged with the lives of their children. On the eighteenth of August, two thousand and twelve, I am going to have the Million Father March come through Rialto, and I would like to have the school board, the parents, and particularly the fathers engage in one of the most incredible events of fathers coming together as one, that will actually meet Route sixty-six. The fatherhood meets the mother road. And so I would like to work with your district, I would like to work with your board, I would like to work with the city of Rialto, as I have with the county, Dr. Thomas's office. Today alone, I've had the opportunity to visit over five school districts, and they are very excited about what is happening. Colleagues around America, for the next month and a half, we are meeting with people who count, and those are the parents that send their children to school every day to get educated so they can improve these communities. And so, Honorable Board, I ask that you be receptive to our move on working with youth to ensure that they have a better education. We are confronted with a number of issues, particularly getting these young people graduated, and when you see Fathers Coming Together as One, it is one of the most powerful experiences that you will ever see, and we're going to bring it right here to Rialto. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jorge Rivera.
Dr. Seabron, Cabinet members, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak here, for giving me the opportunity to speak here today. The reason why I'm here once again is because I'm very concerned about the Special Education Department. I am very concerned because of those who are in charge, Senior Director Mark Blaine, Senior Coordinator Alejandro Gonzalez, they lack the leadership, they lack the knowledge, and they lack good judgment. My son, I'm going to have to bring this back to a person, to my son, what's going on with my son. Before I do that, I just want to make sure that we don't continue with this, that we have another Don Mead moment, where she walked away with a quarter million dollars from our children. This is money that should have been implemented to provide services to our children with special needs, not to provide Don Mead with a package. needs, not to provide Don Mead with a, with a package that she left, she walked away. When she left us with 700 violations of the law. And this is not what I am saying, it is per Mr. Wallace's. What he related to us when we met with him and with Mark Blind when we were about to start our, you know, the committee of the parents who have children with special needs. See, my, my child right now is in need of AB-8 services. His behaviors have exponentially, maladaptive behaviors have exponentially grown. His work productivity has gone down the drain. For the past six, for the past year and a half, he has not met his goals. All we get for the past, was that two years? We get failing grades. Who's going to hear us? Who's going to hear me? Who's going to provide my son with a fair chance to get an appropriate education? Who's going to provide my child and those kids in his situation with a fair chance, with a fair chance at life to do at least what's best, to the best of their ability? Why, why, why is it that we're not so focused on providing, on harvesting those talents that they have so they could at one point be able to be self-sufficient? This is nonsense and we need a true person, a director of special, special, special department be provided and we got to get rid of this, people who do not know what they're doing. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Mr. Brian Harper. Mr. Brian Harper.
Good evening, cabinet members. My name is Brian Harper and I'm a 15-year employee with the district and also I'm a parent in the district. And the reason I came this evening is I just wanted to give a sincere thank you to Dr. Seabrim and the cabinet for all that you're doing. A lot of, in this climate today, there's a lot of programs being cut from schools and as a parent in the district, I appreciate the fact that you guys are continuing to add programs so that our kids can have alternative things to do when they get out of school. And I just think it's been a real plus for our students, I know it has for my son. And as an example, there was a program that was done down at Rialto High School recently for 12 weeks where the students got to work with the NFL Players Association, Association former players. And one of the main things that I took away from that as a parent, watching the students out there, is the NFL players continually, continually preach academics. And I think that's a great thing. I think a lot of times when programs are being mentioned and things of that nature, I think people look at them from just the athletic avenue on it. I believe that when students are hearing things from guys that they respect as far as NFL players and things of that nature, I think it does a lot because the parent, I'm trying to tell my kid, you know, to do the right thing, but sometimes they need to hear it from someone else. So I just wanted to thank in particular Dr. Seabrim for all your support in the board as well for, you know, in this climate, you know, keeping those programs alive in our district. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we will move to items on the agenda. Is there anyone? None? Then we will go to public hearing, number three. Pursuant to the requirements of the government code and board policy, the contract proposal submitted by the Rialto Education Association, REA, for an agreement between REA Board of Education and Rialto Unified School District is hereby posted in compliance with the legislative requirements of public notice. Next, we will go to public information and correspondence. Number one, recap of approved change orders for wireless net and technology packages, Rialto Middle School, January 1, 2012 through March 31, 2012. Number two, recap of approved change orders for renovation of Rialto Science Lab, Phase Two, January 1, 2012 through March 31, 2012. Inspection reports. Williams Settlement Legislative, Legislation Quarterly Uniform Compliance Report Summary covering January through March 2012. Putting on the Ritz Gayla fundraiser will be held on Saturday, this, this weekend, Saturday, April 14, 2012 at 6:00 PM at Carter High School, 2630 North Linden Avenue, Rialto, California, 92377. Number five, the district art fair will be held on Thursday, April 19, 2012 at 6:00 PM in the West Wing of the John, Dr. John R. Castellunas Education Center, 182 East Walnut Avenue, Rialto. And a reminder that our next meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for Wednesday, April 25th and that meeting will be at Rialto High School at 7:00 PM, 595 South Eucalyptus Avenue, here in Rialto. Next on the agenda is Consent Calendar Action Section. All matters listed, the consent calendar are considered by the Board of Education to be routine and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no discussion of these items prior to the time the board considers the motion unless members of the board, the administrative staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent items. We need to approve items, consent items E through I. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Okay, it's been moved at second. Time for a discussion. Any discussion?
I just have one, it came to our attention a little bit ago that if we look at item F 4.7, that we should have checked our math a little bit and the electives should be 50, not 55.
Okay, thank you. We, there was another correction also, that the education credits told 185 instead of 180. That was another correction in that same sentence.
I guess the decision is should the total credits needed to graduate from adult ed be 180 or 185?
185.
Isn't it 180 or is it 185? I believe it's 180. If it is 180, then we should correct the electives by lowering it to 50 credits in electives.
So, and this is the first reading for this?
Second or? Okay, very well.
Yeah, so we will approve it on the third reading.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Montez, you have a question?
Yes, item E, minutes. Yeah, I, I just would like to point out that per Education Code 35145 and 35163 and our board bylaws 92, 9324, the board secretary is responsible for the recording of our minutes. And I believe Dr. Seabrim has stated that he is the board secretary, so he should be in charge of recording the minutes. Currently, we have other staff members recording the minutes, which I don't have a problem with, but I do think responsibility should be taken for incorrectly or, or maybe a double standard in the way the minutes, I'd like to turn your attention to page reference E 1.5, under the public comment, record of minutes. Mrs. Sue Robertson spoke at the last board meeting and she had a lot to say and I understand the minutes are not supposed to be recorded verbatim, but I, I believe that it's, it's a double standard when, and I, I approved, I approve all the minutes most of the time, especially when people, whether they have good things or bad things to say about any of us. But it upsets me when someone like Sue Robertson comes and, and has a lot to say, it gets shrunk down to one little, a few words, but when someone comes to speak negative about me, they put verbatim what they said and what they're, what they're upset about. Now, I want to be fair and, and I want to approve all of the minutes as long as we're being fair with the way they're being recorded. Another example there is Roy Wilson, child advocate. He, Mr. Wilson expressed his concern to the board for hiring without a background check. He specifically said, criticized the board for not hi, for hiring our superintendent without doing a background check from Lindwood and Compton Unified. That stuff should be recorded in the minutes and I don't think it's fair for superintendent or anyone else that's in charge of recording the minutes to dictate what they, what they want to record in the public minutes and what they don't want to record. Now I understand these meetings are, are recorded live and there's video copies, but when parents log on or when one from the community logs on to our website, the minutes only that are written is what's shown. And I don't think it's fair, I don't think we should pick and choose what we want to record and what we don't want to record in the written minutes. I just want to point that out and, and we don't have to make any changes to any, any of these minutes, but I do want to call to the attention to this board and to the board secretary to please be fair in the recording of the minutes.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, yeah, one more thing. Regarding approved the purchase order listings, I, I've been asking for some summaries of some descriptions and I haven't got them.
What did you reference?
Page five, regarding the approval of the purchase order listing booklet for, under business, that's H?
H2.
Two. You know, I'm, I'm getting tired of repeatedly asking for it. I don't know what else to do other than to ask for it, not just in person and through email, but also in public. So I'd appreciate it if, if I could get this sent to me electronically, I know our other districts do it, our district's done it in the past, I don't see what the big deal is. And that'll be it for items E through I, for me.
Okay, any other questions, discussion? Okay. Preferential vote by a student board member?
Aye.
Board members?
Aye.
Motion is carried.
And that's going to be an aye for me except for, and a no on, three, I mean, two, H2.
Okay, correction, note on H2? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, for me and a yes on the rest of the items.
Next we will go to item J, Discussion Action Items. Discussion Action Items will be enacted in one motion unless members of the Board of Education request specific items to be discussed. Could I get a motion to approve items J1 through J3 and K through L?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved at second. Are there any questions, discussion?
Yeah, and I'd like to, I have some questions regarding this resolution, 11, 12, 76.
We didn't get there yet. That was not included.
Oh, is that one separate?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
No, I'm sorry, isn't J1 the one you're discussing?
That, yeah, that's what I, that's what I thought. It says approve items.
They say J1 through J3.
That includes J1.
I think he's talking about J1.
Oh, what did you say? The resolution, I'm sorry, I beg your pardon.
It's okay.
There's two resolutions there.
It's okay, it's okay, I make mistakes too.
All right, go ahead.
This, this resolution is very important and I think it's important that we engage in dialogue from time to time on very important resolutions. We're talking about $33 million. So I'd like to ask our superintendent, or maybe Casey could help us. It's to authorize the district to issue not to exceed $33 million in general obligation bonds. I'd like for someone, maybe Casey could help me to please explain to me what this transaction means and also inform the viewing audience.
Casey.
How this will affect our property tax bills.
This evening, we have the representative from our financial advisor, Kushru Gairiara, and he's here to answer any questions.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Kush Gairiara with Cobo Flowers Windows, very pleased to be over here tonight to give you a quick overview of the resolution you're considering and what the outcome would be if you were to approve it. As you may be aware, your district has issued general obligation bonds in the past, I'm not talking about the most recent election we had in 2010, but prior to that, your district had issued some general obligation bonds as well, going back to 2003, going back to 2003 and 2004.
And 1999, you have some in the verbiage for 1999 also?
There was, there was, the election was out in 1999, okay? The bonds were sold in series, so not all the bonds were sold in 1999. Some bonds were sold in 2003 and some bonds were sold out in 2004.
And we want to resell them again today?
We want to refinance, what the resolution is proposing to do is to refinance the bonds, just like with, for homeowners who have home mortgages. You may have heard that interest rates are pretty much at an all-time low at this point. So we're looking to refinance those bonds in order to be able to reduce the interest payment component of the bonds, okay? And pass all those savings on back to taxpayers. So any savings of the refinancing of these bonds, or all of the savings of the refinancing of the bonds, I should say, would be passed back to taxpayers in the form of lower taxes. At this point, we're anticipating the refinancing would save somewhere between $800,000 and a million dollars of interest costs by taking advantage of the lower prevailing interest rates in the market than what the bonds were initially sold at that time. The bonds were absolutely sold at a very fair interest rate, but the market conditions were higher in 2003 and 2004 than they are today. So we're proposing to refinance those bonds. Refinancing will involve selling new bonds, which in turn pay off the old bondholders, and you, you take advantage then of the new interest rate. It's very similar to a home mortgage refinancing and that's the process that we're proposing to undertake. Please be aware that this refinancing is subject to market conditions because if you approve the resolution today, it, it will still take some time to be able to go through the process to lock in the interest rate. And if the interest, if the savings are sufficient and approved by your staff, which we recommend to be at least $800,000, I think we should set a target of at least a million dollars, okay?
You can't guarantee that though, depending on the market.
Yes, if, if the market conditions change, if the, if it appears that there isn't the savings, the district does not owe the professionals any fees, okay? But the district could still, if the savings levels drop to say $500,000, the district could still elect to undertake the, the transaction. But there's a rule of the thumb in the industry that we look for savings of at least 3%, which amounts to about $800,000. It's our intent to be able to beat those numbers when we actually go into the market, which would probably be between $2,000.
Is, will this be reduction, so will this be a reduction on the people's project tax bill?
Yes, sir. All of those savings will be passed on to the property tax bills, and they will be seen in the form of, of a lower tax bill. Keep in mind that it'll be, it's a million dollars, it's a substantial dollar amount, it'll be over the, the remaining life of the bonds, which there's another about 10 or 12 years of, of remaining life of the bond. So over that period of time, we will be, property tax owners will be seeing a reduction in their property tax bills, in, in order, because of the ability to pay a lower interest component on the bonds. And there will be no extending of the term, and by law, the payment in every year will be lower, okay? This, this transaction cannot be done unless the payment will be lower in every year. That's a legal requirement. The general rule of the thumb requirement in the industry is savings of at least 3%, which amounts to about eight, a little over $800,000. Once again, our recommendation to the district would be to try and hit at least a million dollars. Once again, our recommendation to the district would be to try and hit at least a million dollars.
But you can't guarantee that three percent.
We cannot, all we would say is that if the three percent doesn't occur, we would not recommend you, the district, doing the transaction. And at that point, we would shell the transaction, wait for some future date if interest rates are even lower. And if that case does arise, we would do the transaction at that time. You do not have a legal requirement to hit three percent, you could accept lower than three percent. Technically, the legal requirement is that there must be a savings, it's as specific as there must be a dollar in savings. But obviously, it probably wouldn't make sense to do this whole transaction for a dollar. So we would recommend at least a three percent savings.
I want to thank you for addressing the community with this resolution. We got this on Friday, it's very extensive. I think it would be good for the board to get some professional advice on this proposal. It sounds good, but it also sounds like it's got some small fine print. And I would just like to recommend that we just wait and get some professional advice. I appreciate the information being given to us on Friday, but it is extensive. And maybe we should just take a better look at this before we go with this, through with this. Because again, you're saying you can't guarantee anything, right?
Cannot guarantee that the savings would occur, okay? If I may just indicate that the, those resolutions are prepared by the district's legal bond counsel, who you have used for several years. You have done, the district has done a refunding in the past with the same bond counsel, the same legal counsel, Orik Harrington and Sartliff. So these documents have been prepared, these documented in preparation for a while. The county has been included in the process, your county treasurer's office has been included in the process. And your staff has been looking at it quite closely as well, which is your CBO primarily. So yes, if the district chooses to adopt the resolution at a later time, I would understand that.
Next board meeting, would you be able to wait till the next board meeting?
We could, the answer is, the only risk that you take, and I'm not trying to use any scare tactics over here, is if the interest rates move away from us, the longer we wait, there's a probability, there's a possibility or a probability that if interest rates were to increase, waiting may not allow us to do the transaction. But there's, there's no guarantee, it could be that a month from now, interest rates are even lower. Today, the saving levels, if we were going into the market today, would be about one point one, almost one point two million dollars. Is what we anticipate the saving levels to be today, if we could do this transaction today. We cannot, waiting to the next board meeting is absolutely an option for the board's consideration. But it may, it's possible that we may lose a window of opportunity.
Let me ask you a question then. I would tend to agree with you and I appreciate your expertise and your company's help with our district. You've been a good, good resource for many years. I don't think anybody thinks the interest rates will go down, nobody's foreseeing that. Many are thinking that sooner or later they'll come back up. In fact, the Federal Reserve made some allusion to that recently. The downside is, we go ahead and approve the resolution, the interest skyrockets to ten percent, we just don't sell the bonds. So there's really no downside, is there?
I don't see a downside, but I understand.
I think it's a win for the district and a win for the people of Rialto, isn't it?
President Gilbert?
Yes.
If I may, you know, there's no guarantees in decisions we make, especially when it involves finances. The old saying, you wait so long for your ship to come in that sometimes the pier will collapse. And traditionally, when you look at election cycles, interest rates have a tendency to go down just before people get elected. Then after they get elected, they go the other way. Here's a window of opportunity for the residents of Rialto. We, in my opinion, I think we should jump on board and do the right thing for this community who has supported us here at Rialto Unified School District. I don't think anybody's saying no to it, but it is an opportunity. Looks like we have some professionals in front of us right now. And we have a capable staff and we have a report that we've all had the opportunity to look at. So I don't see, I don't see any red, you know, I know there's small print, everything we sign. But I think most of us here can attest that we've probably been involved in real estate. And you can imagine, you know, all that paper, if you try to understand every single paper, it's really, you're not going to make a decision. And so all of a sudden, you lose that opportunity and who loses? Our community, and we really don't want to see that happen.
So just, just to make sure, one more time, how will this affect our tax rates?
It will reduce the tax rates, at the end of the day, to pay back the bonds. Assuming the saving levels are, let's take a number, under today's circumstances, a little bit over a million one.
To the property owners?
To the property owners, the property owners in your district, within the boundaries of your district, would be paying about a million and one less to pay off the bonds over the life. So they would be seeing a combined reduction in their tax bills of a little bit over a million dollars under today's interest rates.
All right, well, if you guys are going to go bat for us, I hope you hit a home run.
We'll try, sir, we'll do our very best.
Any other discussion?
Just a comment, we always want to do the best for our community. And I believe that the option right now is on the table and we should take that. Because we can always, at the last minute, there are signing options. And we can just say, nix it at that point. But at this point, the bond rates are as good as they have gotten. For those of you who follow the markets, you will understand that. Most people do not follow them and do not understand them. Mr. Montez, I thank you for bringing that up and I thank you for asking the questions. But I believe now is the time to move on this.
Okay, I think before that document was handed to us, that it had gone through legal channels, is that right, Casey? So it had been looked over. And we hire people to do that work for us. And when they present a document and a decision to us with the legal expertise and the guidance from our consultants, then I don't see a reason why we shouldn't go forward with this. Mr. Montez?
No, thank you, President Joan Gilbert. I just think that when we have very important items such as this one, that's going to affect our property tax for the residents of the district. And when we have an item this extensive, I'll be the first one to admit that I don't understand it all. And I would appreciate, I'm sure the board would appreciate, maybe even more thorough, some more time for important items like this, for us to look at and research. But I do appreciate you taking the time to come all the way here, you know, and answer our questions.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, are we ready to vote on items?
J one.
J one through J three and K through L. There's a motion on the floor, it has been second, are we ready to vote? Mr. Martinez?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ayala?
That's a yes.
Mr. Montez?
Just for that item or for all of them? I'm sorry. For, that's, that's going to be a yes on all except for, that's J two and J four.
You're voting yes for J two and J four?
A no.
You're voting no?
Yeah, for J two and J four.
I don't, I don't think we're voting for J four yet.
We've gotten to four.
Okay.
J four is not on the motion.
Okay.
Mr.?
That's a yes then.
Ridgway.
I'm voting yes on all those items.
Motion is carried. Now we'll move to item four. Adopt resolution number eleven dash twelve dash seventy-eight, excusing the absence of board member Joante Gilbert from Wednesday, March twenty-eighth, regular meeting of the Board of Education.
So moved?
Second.
It's been moved and second. Now we'll get a vote. I will abstain. Can I get other, Mr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Ayala?
Yes.
Mr. Montez?
No.
Mr. Ridgway?
Yes.
The ice cabbage. Okay. Item K, personnel report number ten sixty-eight.
Ma'am, I believe we've covered K and L already as part of the.
We already voted it with J one through J three.
Yeah, that's right, I always forget that. Item M, comments from board members.
We still got J four, right?
No, we just did that.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I did too. Item M, comments from members of the Board of Education. The board president may grant each board member three minutes for the purpose of making an individual, individual board report or statements consistent with the Ralph M. Brown Act and Board bylaws. And we will start with board member Martinez.
Gilbert, I just wanted to thank everyone for doing their best in a very difficult year, students including. The public is always watching, as we've heard. And I welcome any comment or criticism. Some people communicate differently than others. Some are more positive, some are less positive. Nonetheless, it is communication. And if you remember, early on, I was always saying, I don't, I don't care, I don't mind if you're communicating in any manner at all, as long as I'm hearing from you. So I welcome all comments in any method. Eventually, the persons will learn to communicate a little better, but nonetheless, I welcome it. I take it to heart, not necessarily agreeing with many of the items. But as, as you see on the board, sometimes we have to agree to disagree, but not be disagreeable about it. So anyway, just continue on, we've got a difficult year coming up. We're looking at numbers from the state budget, the associations are looking at them with us. And everybody is just wringing their hands, hoping something will go through for education. At the same time, I'm concerned for everyone else, not just education. So for those of you who are churchgoers and prayer warriors, your nation needs you. You know what to do. For those of you who choose to go with another God or no God at all, that's fine as well. However you choose to address the nation's needs, I just ask you do that. Because your schools need you, your students need you. And we need to all be doing something positive and moving the nation forward, the state forward, and Rialto forward together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ayala.
Well, thank you, President Gilbert. Good evening, staff and community. I'd like to talk a little bit about platforms. What about platforms? Different types of platforms help individuals with different personalities, different needs, find their way. Extracurricular activities, sports, music, a golf league. And you say a golf league. We just started one, yesterday was the first event, Sierra Lakes. And we had staff from Rialto Unified School District attend. And what an opportunity for people to what? Get to know each other, develop relationships, and just go out and reduce a little bit of stress. It's not only just kids, but we have staff who need to get a little attention, have an opportunity. So I encourage more people to sign up. If you need to know who to sign up with, you got Saeda, you got Tom Kelly who organizes it, or give me a call. CST testing, a brief comment, there's many ways to encourage kids and help teachers. But I want to use the word integrity. Even if we don't do well, let's not jeopardize integrity. Some school districts have and they wish they could turn back the hands of time and they can't. So, you know, we'll just do our best and we'll keep moving forward. Again, I want to mention something about the fiscal report coming down from the state. Putting things in perspective, I've said this before, because John Perez was down at Carter High School not too long ago. He put it this way, five dollars a week per person, we don't even have these discussions anymore. That kind of angered me when I heard that, but it's the way it is. So is it a crisis? You know, we have a great state, we have a great country. We need to continue to have confidence in the flag, in our country, our communities, support our local businesses, and it comes back. So we need to work together. If doom and gloom does come, and seems like every year we have had those challenges, we have a tremendous staff here on board. I have seen it time and time again, and what are they doing? They're saving jobs. And when they save jobs, they directly help the kids of our communities. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Montez.
Good evening, buenas noches. I'd like to thank Dr. Sebrem and the district staff for finally giving me the information I've been requesting a little over a year now. And in regards to the contracts issued to Educational Consultant Services and PMI, I received all the contracts, invoices and vendor histories I requested under the Public Information Act, with the exception of the request for proposal that was advertised for companies to provide financial services and program management services as provided by ECS and PMI. With the large dollar amounts of each contract, I as a board member and as a fiscal steward of the district's budget, want to ensure our community at large that we are getting the best, the best for our dollars. I have a few questions and comments regarding the ECS, please get out your pens. In the two thousand nine, two thousand ten fiscal year, ECS was paid two hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents, according to the vendor history. Under the contract signed for hourly services, approximately ninety thousand dollars was billed under that contract. And the majority was for services paid to a Sandy Berry who charged the district a rate of a hundred and fifty dollars per hour to coach principals. While I believe coaching is essential, why did we pay ECS a consultant to pay consultant? That's a waste of money, that's double dipping, or that's double paying. We have very experienced administrators in our own district who can provide mentoring services for our principals and other management staff. Can't these services be provided in-house? In the two thousand ten, two thousand eleven fiscal year, ECS was paid six hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, eight hundred and twenty-six. According to the vendor history, again, under the contract signed for the hourly services, approximately three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, fifty-two dollars was billed under that contract. The majority of billing hours were for Phil Robbie for CBO services. And I'd like to ask Mr. Felix Avila to verify that the district was not paying Dr. Robbie a salary through our payroll system as interim assistant superintendent of business services at the same period of time. If you could stop that?
No, we have three minutes.
Okay, maybe, maybe next meeting you can get, you can get that answer for the, for us, for the public here. Also, in the two thousand ten, two thousand eleven fiscal year, ECS billed for services for an interim director of fiscal, fiscal analyst, fiscal supervisor and MNO accounting. Why are these services provided through a consultant and not through our district? This practice can take away from bargaining unit members' jobs. And to be transparent, all positions that are established already in the district should be hired by the district, not by a consultant. Consultant services are to be contracted only when the expertise is not available within our district. Again, in the two thousand ten, two thousand eleven fiscal year, Sandy Berry continued to provide coaching services.
Thank you, Mr. Ridgway.
And I'd like some answers for our next board meeting, we need to be transparent.
Thank you very much. You know, I've been thinking a lot about our seniors and getting ready for our graduation and prom and want to congratulate you and I also want to remind you, please be safe. Please take good care of each other, drive safely, celebrate, but celebrate safely. That's important to us. Want to apologize to Mr. Sosa, Mr. Blind, I think I missed, messed up your names last time and I apologize. Say to Mr. Blind. I wanted to tell you a story I heard recently, I was talking with one of my principal friends not far away. I was talking with one of my principal friends, not far away, and we're getting ready to honor some volunteers. And he said, you know, I really love this person. She has been a crossing guard for 12 years. She's a volunteer. And he told me how he met her. She came up and she looked angry. My friend had opened a new elementary school. Those of you who work at elementary schools know what traffic is like the first day of school. And I saw Mr. Culberhaus almost choke when I said, "opening a new elementary school", because you're establishing traffic patterns for the very first time, and everyone there doesn't know where the buses will show up, they don't know where the police are, they don't know where the drop-off is, and everybody needs to find that extra $1.25 for school lunch. And so the traffic patterns around elementary schools can be bad. And she was very upset. I mean, you were waiting 15, 20, 30 minutes to drop off a kid. She was very upset. She watched the traffic patterns for several days. She came up to the principal, my friend, and said, "You know what? I came up here intending to complain, but I can't think of anything better. I can't think of a way to fix it, so I'm here to help." And she put on a security vest and a cone, and she's been directing traffic for seven years. Her students have moved on. And I appreciate that. I appreciate the feedback, and I would certainly appreciate some good ideas on how to help. I think those are, make our best volunteers. I want to encourage everyone to come out to the Ritz this Saturday evening. We'll be at Carter High School. My wife and I, I'm afraid that she's, I didn't break my arm this year, so I have no excuse not to wear a tuxedo, and so I will be, I will be in a suit, and we'll be having a great time at Carter High School. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Fernandez?
Thank you, President Gilbert. Good evening, everyone. First and foremost, I want to thank Eisenhower High School for hosting this event tonight. Thank you for having us here. Last week, we had our monthly DSAC meeting. We discussed various topics such as Taste of Rialto in June. Putting on the Ritz, which is actually this Saturday, will be held at Carter High at 6:00 PM. We're very excited to attend as a DSAC group, and I know it's almost sold out, but it's really nice to see at least 700 people attending this event and meeting our emcee, Jessie Durant. On Saturday, I also had the opportunity to attend the Senior Citizen Prom that Rialto High School hosted for the very first time. Since it was a success, we plan on doing it annually. You know, it brings great joy to us to see our elders smile and enjoy themselves and give back to the community. Most importantly, I believe that tomorrow is the last day of CSTs, and I want to conclude my announcement or my comment by encouraging all our students to finish off strong, eat a good breakfast, get night's sleep, and, you know, we definitely want to encourage our students to do good on these exams and prioritize academics. So that concludes my board comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fernandez, for giving the other students those encouraging marks to do well on your test.
Thank you.
I want to thank Eisenhower High School for a wonderful, being such wonderful host. The dinner that was prepared by the culinary arts students was excellent, outstanding, and they were so professional. So please let them know tomorrow that the board really appreciated them and what they did for us to make our evening here very enjoyable. And thanks for my eagle pen. Thank you very much, and the things that you gave us. And I would just like to say congratulations to Mr. Navo. He must be gone now, but just congratulations, let him know that I said congratulations for his outstanding work at KC. And I would like to also thank all the schools that participated in the African Diaper Project for the Links Incorporated. And when I was looking back at the back of our agenda for tonight, I looked under our core values, and one of the core values that we have here in the Rialto Unified School District is community. We build positive partnerships for the benefit of our students and our community, and that is an example of building partnerships with our community. And I want to thank all those schools that participated and the students that really helped, because this shows that when Rialto goes to do something, we don't do it small, we do it big. So congratulations to those of you who got your certificates tonight, and that concludes my report. Anything else for the good of the cause? Can we get a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Second.
It's been moved, and second, that we will adjourn tonight's meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.